Welcome to the City Club of Eugene's May 3rd, 2024 program. My name is Andrew Calak and I am City Club's president. We're coming to you today from Willamette High School in the Bethel neighborhood of Eugene. It's my pleasure to extend a warm welcome to our speakers and to all of you joining us in person, online, and over the radio. For three decades, the City Club of Eugene has remained dedicated to its founding mission: to build community vision through open inquiry. In accordance with our mission and purpose, we hope to help connect people throughout our community and across generations, identities, experiences, and perspectives. You are invited this week and every week to join us in this effort: to share your wisdom, learn something new, and take active steps to make a difference in this city and region that we love. Of course, we cannot do this work alone, so a special thank you to our Platinum Community and Diamond sponsors. The Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce, serving as a catalytic leader in creating a vibrant and diverse economy that drives economic opportunity and well-being. Kaiser Permanente, which exists to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the communities we serve. More information at www.kp.org. The University of Oregon has helped Oregonians question critically, think logically, reason effectively, communicate clearly, act creatively, and live ethically since 1876. More information at uoregon.edu. Peace Health has been proud to serve Eugene, Lane County, and beyond as your hometown healthcare partner for more than 80 years. The Peace Health mission is to keep you and your family healthy. Learn more at peacehealth.org. Lane Community College transforms lives through learning. LCC provides comprehensive, accessible, high-quality educational opportunities that promote student success. For more information, visit lanec.edu. And thank you to the City of Eugene for its support as well. Whether you're joining us for the first time or you're a longtime listener, I invite you to support our work by becoming an individual member, a business or community sponsor, or volunteering to be part of our committees. You can do all those things and more at cityclubofeugene.org. Today is our last but not least election program of the year, featuring candidates for the Lane County Commission. And with that, I'll turn the mic over to Nathan Wilk of KLCC, our moderator for today's forum. Nathan?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to City Club. My name is Nathan Wilk. I'm a reporter with KLCC here in Eugene. We are looking today at seats for the Board of Lane County Commissioners. To my left, I have four candidates competing in two races. For District 3, that is South Eugene, we have incumbent Lori Trigger and challenger Grace Whitcomb. And further to my left, for North Eugene, that's District 4, we have incumbent Pat Farr and newcomer Zach Mollahan. Mollahan, sorry. We're going to start with opening statements, beginning with Commissioner Trigger.
Thank you to the City Club for your interest in local government and dedication to civic discourse. My name is Lori Trigger, and I'm running for reelection to continue serving as your Lane County Commissioner. I've lived in this district going on 40 years, raised two kids here, and now I'm watching my twin grandsons grow up in this community that I love. I want them to have what we did when we first moved here: the ability to afford a home, meaningful work with wages enough to pay the bills, and ample green spaces and clean rivers to play in. My grandchildren deserve that, as do all children of their generation and beyond. I've dedicated my life to delivering critical human services and advocating for and with some of our most marginalized and least resourced neighbors, both professionally and as a community volunteer. And since 2021, I've had the distinct honor of serving in elected office as your county commissioner. As your commissioner, I've been a strong voice for the creation of more transitional shelter and permanent housing, as well as the wraparound services people need to live healthy, stable, fulfilling lives. I've successfully advocated for expanded addiction treatment programs and facilities, evidence-based mental health services, and have been steadfast in my commitment to doing all we can to create more resilient communities and mitigate the impacts of climate chaos. I've been a leader in securing federal, state, and local funding to meet the needs of Lane County residents: needs like public safety and criminal justice reform programs, improvements to our precious parks system, and more housing and healthcare services. My focus, tenacity, and trusted relationships with our state and federal delegation has helped me bring tens of millions of dollars home to our community to support these needs over the last four years. These are challenging and exciting times. The issues before us are complex and compelling, and I look forward to the conversation today to talk more about them. Thank you.
My name is Grace Whitcomb. I'm a housing provider and work daily with people struggling with housing issues and mental illness. The reason I'm running for county commissioner is because of the very sad, very horrible problem we have with our homeless population. Lane County has 4,000 homeless people, and it gets worse every year. What kind of society have we become to turn our backs on our fellow human beings? Lane County, it's not, first of all, I just want to say, it's not a drug problem, it's a housing problem. Lane County is short at least 8,000 housing units today. I am running for this office because the Commissioner Trigger has voted against more housing, time and time again, for Lane County. My plan is to start at the bottom of the problem, which is to get more people trained to build more housing. As commissioner, I will work with the school districts to get career technical education back into the schools. I'm talking welding, carpentry, electrical, mechanical, engineering, and plumbing. We need skilled people ready to build 10,000 housing units and plan new neighborhoods in the next couple of years. Look, the homeless problem falls on the county. Today, Lane County needs to make housing, and it needs to make people the number-one priority, even over ecology. Lane County already does a great job at taking care of waste, recycling, and even recycling methane gas and turning that into power. We need to spend our precious resources on housing and taking care of the homeless and the vulnerable people that will soon become homeless. Thank you. Appreciate you.
My name's Pat Farr. I'm the county commissioner for North Eugene. Welcome to Willamette High School. My wife Debbie and I have spent a lot of time in this gymnasium, in the halls of this high school, and in Bethel School District in general. Debbie continues to serve on the Bethel School Board. I started on the Bethel School Board in 1991. Miss those days. You know, when we look at our communities, we look at the things that affect people's prosperity and people's ability to live dignified lives. My work on housing and homelessness, funding public safety and long-term workforce stability is ongoing. I want to continue my work on public safety, on land use, poverty and homelessness, economic development, environmental issues, and effective, transparent government. Housing and homelessness are at emergency levels on the West Coast and in Lane County in particular. Every year, we fall farther behind on our organic housing needs by 1,200 front doors every year. I've served on the Lane County Poverty and Homelessness Board since its inception, the Lane County Human Services Commission for more than 20 years, and currently I'm on the multi-agency MAC collaborative, guiding the distribution of $18 million from Governor Kotek's Order 23-02 to area nonprofits and municipalities throughout all of Lane County. Local, state, and national steering committees on health and human services and multiple other task forces occupy my time, and committees that have been effective addressing the changing needs of homelessness and the changing causes of homelessness. I am seeing and participating in greater cooperation of resources addressing homelessness between governments, nonprofit agencies, and private industries than we've ever had. An example is the success of the first round of All-in Lane County, which addresses the emergency in three areas. In homeless prevention programs, in the last six months, we created 943 prevention, we prevented homelessness from 943 families of 741, which is our goal. In rehousing, we rehoused 407 families of the 247 that was our goal. On emergency shelter beds, we created 304 emergency shelter beds of 230 from our goal. Governor Kotek continually talks about the success of Lane County and our addressing homeless needs based on the success of All-in Lane County. Greater coordination is needed, and experience in the School Board, Eugene City Council, the legislator, and Lane County governments places me in a position to continue, to solidify the necessary relationships to create working bonds.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Zach Mollholland. I'm a Democrat running for Lane County Commission, currently serve on the City of Eugene's Budget Committee and the Lane Community College Board of Education. I'm running on good jobs, affordable housing, clean air and water, and the homelessness crisis. I want to make sure that we're extending services to new areas of the city so we can build more housing and help convert existing rentals to homeownership, whether that's mobile home parks or apartments to condominiums. I want to make sure we have clean air and water for all of our residents. I'm going to make sure that we regulate polluters like J.H. Baxter and make sure that we don't have another one. And I want to work with E-Web to make sure that we have clean water. On homelessness, I want to make sure that we are investing in permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing programs, and prevention programs. Unfortunately, the county is getting ready to cut a quarter of its homelessness services budget as federal dollars run out, and I'm committed to making sure that we not only replace those dollars, but then expand homelessness programming through something like an affordable housing and homelessness bond. On good jobs, I'm looking to extend fiber countywide and make sure that we create a new healthcare infrastructure plan, working in concert with Rep. Nathanson and the work group that she's formed, so that we can create a long-term plan to build a new hospital in Eugene and make sure that we have the healthcare infrastructure to meet our needs. I'm endorsed by the League of Conservation Voters, Unions, AFSCME, AFL-CIO, the Lane Community College Education Association, and the Eugene Tenants Alliance for Representing Renters. I'm also endorsed by former Eugene Mayor Kitty Piercy, City Councilors Leach, Yeh, and Keating, and the majority of my Lane Community College Board members are supporting me in this race, as well as many others which are available to see on my website at zachfororegon, Z-A-C-H-F-O-R-oregon.com. Thanks very much.
Before I proceed, I'd just like to restate for... (bell dings) Just...
Recite.
Perfect. I'd just like to restate for accuracy's sake that further to my left, for District 4, representing North Eugene, is incumbent Pat Farr and newcomer Zach Mollholland. All right. In your opening statements, in your opening statements, all of you touched upon your backgrounds. I want to know, how has your previous experience in or out of the Board of County Commissioners qualified you for this position, and why will you be the best candidate? Let's start with Zach.
Thank you. So I currently serve on the Lane Community College Board of Education, where I've been a strong advocate to protect jobs while balancing budgets and growing the institution, where we've grown 10% in the student body this year. Also, working to make sure that we are expanding opportunities for high schoolers to earn free college credit while they're still in high school, so that they can graduate high school with their first two years of college completed for 100% for free. Also, trying to make sure that we are, making sure that all of our bond funds are spent as promised to voters. On the Eugene Budget Committee, I allocated dollars to the city's EV charging plan and pushed for more funding for homelessness services. And as a member of the Act of Bethel Community Neighborhood Association, we've gotten Bethel next in line for a new neighborhood plan. We haven't had one since 1982, as well as got numerous bike and pedestrian projects added to the Lane County Bicycle Master Plan, and have been a strong advocate to make sure that we protect Golden Gardens Park and that we stop additional polluters from coming to our neighborhood like J.H. Baxter did and polluted our low-income, working-class neighborhood. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Nathan. Once again, Pat Farr. I live right here, live a few blocks from where we are. The reason that I'm qualified is my years of experience right here in Bethel, right here in North Eugene, and right here in Lane County. In 1991, as I mentioned, I joined the Bethel School Board. I left the Bethel School Board to be the award six Eugene City Councilor. I replaced Bobby Green. He recruited me. I was reluctant to do that, but I enjoyed my work with the Bethel, with the Eugene City Council. At the time, Register Guard and other publications talked about the four Eugene high schools. I had to remind them over and over and over again that Willamette's in Eugene also. And finally, they recognized that Bethel is a part of Eugene. It was a struggle. Our parks weren't funded, but ultimately we got our parks funded and we got new parks during my time on the Eugene City Council. I continued that work when I left to become a state legislator, once again reluctantly, but I was recruited to become a state legislator, and I spent one term in the state legislature where I retired to become the executive director of Food for Lane County. That happened in 2005. My work in the legislature gave me a great background. That went very fast. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Nathan. So I've been working for 20 years with people here out in the community as an industrial lubricant salesperson for the first 10 years of those 20, to chemical sales, and now as a housing provider, as I said. I have been talking to millwrights, truck drivers, tree haulers, tree farmers, grass farmers, housing providers, Homes for Good, working with lots of people. I've been a board director a few times, and am currently on the board for community, I'm actually the director of my Rotary Group for local community services, where we come out to this area, Fairfield Elementary Monthly, to assemble and deliver food boxes that are identified through Head Start. I'm out there, I'm working with people, and I believe that that gives me a really strong basis for being a commissioner. I'm also very good at planning and taking care of complicated stuff and making it easier to understand.
Thank you. Experience takes on a lot of different meanings. My initial experience with county government that qualifies me and informs my service every day was about 40 years ago, when I was a new mom and used the WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children, which is a nutritional support and child wellness program for pregnant, breastfeeding women and children ages five and under. And that informs my service every day and my commitment to good family and child health programs at Lane County. I went on to have a career in nonprofits in this community for over 20 years with organizations like Food for Lane County, Mount Pisgah Arboretum, and sponsors, helping formerly incarcerated folks be successful upon reentry. I served on the county's Budget Committee and the Equity and Access Advisory Board. And of course, for the last four years, I've been serving as a county commissioner, which not only includes the day-to-day responsibilities of that role, but participation and active engagement with a number of committee assignments, including the Public Health Advisory Committee, the Human Services Commission, the statewide opioid prevention, opioid settlement prevention, treatment, and recovery board, our Court Security Committee, and the Fair Board. So I have a number of personal lived experiences, government, nonprofit, and administrative experiences that qualify me and inform my decisions every day.
Thank you, Commissioner Trigger, and you all for those answers. Let's start with healthcare. Eugene recently lost Peace Health's Downtown Emergency Room, as well the Hourglass Community Crisis Center, and some patients with Oregon Medical Groups say they were dropped. How can the county help protect healthcare access in this community? Let's start with Grace.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, I got one minute, sorry. I recently heard that the reason Peace Health closed the Downtown Emergency Center is not only because they were losing millions of dollars each year, and not only because the area needed revitalization and updating, but also because Peace Health wants to sell their hospital, and the Downtown Division is keeping prospects from buying. So they closed it. If I had been in position of power years ago, when they first learned that there was a problem with the hospital, I would have leaned in to see how we could help. Today, we would have to invest in state-of-the-art equipment, hospital ambiance, and everything to even bring in new medical staff, new doctors into the area, because basically, money attracts staff and attracts talent. So the only way we can actually help this situation is to beef it up. Thank you.
Perfect. Let's go to Lori Trigger next.
Thank you. Well, healthcare access is something I've been actively involved in and committed to since I was an 18-year-old escort, escorting women accessing abortion services at a clinic in Philadelphia. Access to fundamental, critical healthcare is something every person needs and deserves. It's a fundamental right. As far as here locally, Lane County is actually one of the largest providers of direct medical care. Almost 30,000 people receive their primary healthcare at one of our federally qualified health centers, and I'm thrilled to note that we are opening our seventh and eighth clinics, including our first rural clinic, this year. So Lane County is actually expanding access to healthcare by providing healthcare. This issue of hospital closures is not unique to our community, it is a national issue, and it is really because it is the high-cost surgery centers that are driving success of the bottom line of a hospital. But the fact is, most people need hospitals for things like emergency rooms, visits, short stays, recovery from medical procedures, and those just don't provide the bottom line that hospitals need to thrive. So we are really at a point as a nation where we need to innovate and think differently about how we provide healthcare.
Perfect. In District 4, let's go to Zach Mollholland.
Thank you for the question. I think that the long wait times and travel times that we've seen going to the emergency room is a real issue of concern as Peace Health has left. I want to applaud the work of Rep. Nathanson, bringing together a work group to triage the current situation, to ensure that we have more ambulances, so that we do not have as long of wait times. And I think that we should take the work group that she started and basically use this moment as a catalyst to help us envision what we would like our healthcare system to look like in Lane County in the future, and that we should create a healthcare infrastructure master plan that will set the stage for us to build a new hospital, for us to make sure that we have enough urgent care facilities that are regulated by the state and provide a minimum level of care. And over the long term, I think we should talk to the University of Oregon about building a medical school in Eugene, so that we can train doctors here, and that we can have those amazing, well-high-paid jobs here, and that we can have the pathway into that career like we have for nurses at LCC, and I want to make that pathway for doctors here locally. Thank you.
Perfect. Pat Farr.
You say I have 30 minutes for this? There's a lot to be said about it, most certainly. Let's divide it first into physical health and behavioral health, public health and behavioral health. I'll first talk about public health. Lane County does operate six clinics, public health clinics. We are currently opening one in Cottage Grove, and we are renovating an old Peace Health facility on West 11th Avenue to provide more personal care physicians, PCPs, for the 30,000 or so people that are dependent upon Lane County for PCP. We'll continue our work, expanding our services at Lane County, and also working with Mackenzie Willamette, with Peace Health, and with Kaiser and others, including our CCOs, to increase public health. On behavioral health, Peace Health is committed to, as we are, providing crisis stabilization centers. What that does is it gives people who are suffering from crisis on the street, it gives them a place for the first responders to take them to that's not the emergency room and that's not the jail. Currently, our emergency rooms are clogged with people who are in crisis who should be going to one of our soon-to-come crisis centers. Thank you.
Thank you all. Tying into that, homelessness is an ever-present issue in Eugene and in Lane County. Is the county currently doing enough, and are there other measures that you would advocate for in this term in office? Let's start with Commissioner Trigger.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to acknowledge that homelessness specifically is scary and upsetting to observe, but the people who are really suffering the most and are most vulnerable are our unsheltered and unhoused neighbors. As for whether the county is doing enough, again, very short amount of time to address a very large and complex issue. What we have shown with the investment that we've received through the governor's emergency order on homelessness is that when we have the resources that we need, we are able to deliver and in fact exceed the goals that get set, both for homelessness prevention, for rapid rehousing when someone does lose their home, and for expanding shelter capacity. The county is doing everything it can with the resources that we have, and in fact, we're continuously learning and making adjustments and adaptations to the programs that we fund, as well as the ones that we run directly, to be responsive to what we understand is working based on the data. And so we have exceeded every measure set for us by the governor's funding, and it shows that when we have the adequate resources, we can address this problem. When we work together with community organizations, we can address this problem. When we have the community's support, we can address this problem, and we absolutely must.
Wonderful. And we'll just move on down the line.
As you know, homelessness is, and lack of housing, is my real concern. It's going to take dollars, I'm just going to say it. It's going to take putting our funds into housing and not into other events and that kind of thing, like IMERF. It's going to take dollars to build more housing. And I'm sorry, I lost my notes on this. So, hang on just one second. Oh, I don't have a second. All right. I'm trying to get this together. Thank you, God. We need people trained to build houses. We need money to go out and put into the land. We need to loosen up the urban growth boundary. We need to allow more housing. We need to ease restrictions. We need to build housing. Yes, we have a huge homelessness problem. There's vulnerable people with barriers into getting into housing. They go into the funnel, but they trickle out at the end because, why? There's no housing to put them into. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. You know, it's at the top of the agenda, I talked about housing and homelessness. That is my main focus. It is what I work on. Providing decent living conditions, upgraded living conditions, and in some cases, just their first living environment for families is what I spend my work doing. We recently had Governor's Order 2302 that distributed $18 million to Lane County specifically to distribute among our providers and other governments, to make certain that we are providing not just one-time services for homeless people, but sustained services for homeless people. I spend a great deal of time making certain that we are coordinating with other government agencies and with our vast network of nonprofits to make sure that we're using our money efficiently. We spent the $18 million, once again, the governor is buoyant about how good of a job Lane County did, and we need to work harder to make certain that our coordination is there between the cities of Eugene and Springfield, between the smaller cities and in our rural areas. It is a crisis that has developed and will continue to develop. If it was the same as it was 20 years ago, we would have kicked it, but it's dynamic. It changes on a daily basis.
And Zach Mollholland.
The quick answer is no. The county is not doing enough on homelessness services. In fact, homelessness has doubled in Lane County in the last 10 years while my opponent has been on the Board of County Commissioners. The county's not doing enough. As federal dollars run out, the county's about to lose $4 million, about 25% of its homelessness services budget, and the county seems to be doing nothing to try and stop that cut. We're talking about, well, which programs should we cut first, rather than how can we find more funding to save these programs and then expand these programs? So I'm committed to making sure that we backfill that budget shortfall, and then that we find additional dollars for more homelessness services. So that could be through an affordable housing and homelessness bond. I think we could talk about what the City of Eugene and what the county of Deschutes has previously done, which is spin out some law enforcement services to free up additional dollars for homelessness services. And I think we need to do more. We need to set bigger goals. Our goals are simply not large enough. It's great that we rehoused 400 people last year, but if we have 4,000 people that are homeless and we have an 1,100 waiting list for permanent supportive housing, but we only have 300 beds, we're falling far short of the need, and we need to do much more, not accept that cuts are inevitable. Thank you.
Wonderful. We're going to go back to Zach Mollholland here. Do you see opportunities for new sources of revenue or funding for the county?
Yes. So as I just mentioned, I think there are a few options on the table. At the very high 30,000-foot level, we need tax reform in the state of Oregon. The City of Eugene is talking about how this needs to be pursued. The League of Oregon Cities has talked about this needing to be pursued slowly but surely. Our tax revenues do not keep pace with inflation, so inevitably, we end up having to cut and cut and cut. And we need to fix that system, so that we're not always falling further and further behind. But within that current operating system, we have options. We can do an affordable housing and homelessness bond to fund first-time home-buying programs for renters, try and help them convert mobile home parks to owner-occupied housing when they come up for sale. So there's a lot of, and then, as I also just mentioned, we can spin out certain services like fire protection into a new taxing district that not only provides those services with additional resources and gets them on a stable footing for the long term, it can also free up general fund dollars for priorities like homelessness and climate and other issues that we care about.
Perfect. We'll move down to Commissioner Farr. Do you see opportunities for new sources of revenue or funding for the county? Do you see opportunities for new sources of revenue or funding for the county?
You know, the discussion of tax reform has been around for a long time. When I was in the legislature, we had an interim committee in between to talk about the possibility of raising a sales tax for the state of Oregon. Oregon doesn't have a sales tax. We rely on income tax and we rely on property tax. Continually, we ask people to increase their property taxes by asking for bonds and/or levies for things like stadiums, for things like schools, and for things like potentially other public safety services. We need to make certain that we leverage all of the outside dollars that we possibly can, much as we did with Governor's Order 2302, which brought in $18 million from outside sources for us to focus directly on a very specific set of homeless services. I'll go back to 2016, for instance, when we brought a lot of extra dollars in for what we called Operation 365, a successful program, housing homeless veterans, using some outside money leveraged with Lane County money and other governmental money to make sure we did the best for the dollars that we spent. At the end of that, then First Lady Michelle Obama invited me to the White House to spend a day celebrating what we had done here in Lane County along with other counties around the nation.
Grace Whitcomb.
57% of all the land in Lane County is owned by the federal government. And the federal government used to give Lane County and other counties that had forests, like we do, money, basically. That was the large portion of our revenue as Lane County. We are not able to get that recently. We're not able to get the federal funds from, through BLM for harvesting our trees, basically, our lumber. Sustainable farming of trees is something that's been going on in Oregon for a very long time, and recently, through politics, we are not able to get that funding. Lane County is known in the state as one of the poorest counties. Isn't that surprising? We, yes, we could get more money through taxation. I'm in favor of sales tax. Anyway, the big problem is getting our funding from the federal government.
Thank you for the question, Lori Treeger, Lane County Commissioner. It's important to note that county government, in many ways, is an agent of the state, and the vast majority of our money actually comes from state and federal sources, and it comes with restrictions or designations as to its specific uses. And that's why I've been working hard to increase the revenue that we get from state and federal government for the programs that we're already doing. The idea of generating more revenue, there's many fees for services that we provide, and we have different programs and departments where the fees are different depending, for example, in our park system, if you're renting a Marina Slip, you're paying a fee. But some of our parks are completely free because we want to try to keep our parks accessible to all. So some things are fee-based. Many things are given to us through contract by the state and federal government with designations for how we spend those dollars. But it's really important, as many of the other folks up here have talked about, to consider other sources of public funding. But that requires not just political will, but constituent will. So I'm committed to and spend a lot of time talking to people about what are the things they're willing to pay more for. And this is why I led on directing our administrator, with the support of my four colleagues on the board, to start a public safety funding task force in particular, to work with the community to find out what they want to fund and how they're willing to fund it around public safety in particular.
Thank you so much. As an extension of this discussion, it is possible that in this next term, the Board of County Commissioners may have to contend with budget shortfalls. Facing that possibility, in that situation, what are the services that you would prioritize, and how would you determine which services to reduce or cut? I want to start with Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. We will be experiencing budget shortfall this time for the first time in any great extent since around 2014. Now, the budget shortfall that we had in 2012, 13, 14 was far greater than we're experiencing today. So we're not going to see mass layoffs in the county. We're not going to see huge program cuts. But what we need to do is we need to focus on the things that people expect Lane County government to provide. We have a Health and Human Services Division. Some of their work is, we can bill through Medicaid and have the work paid for through billing. So we need to be able to increase our services and make certain that we don't cut the primary care that we provide to the men, women, and children who require primary care from our clinics. And also, people expect public safety. People expect when you call 911 and you live outside of the urban growth boundary, you expect that you're going to get a response from 911. We're currently not in that situation, so we cannot cut public safety funding any further. So we need to focus on Health and Human Services, focus on public safety, and in some ways, use fees to fill in some of the gaps elsewhere.
Wonderful. Let's go to Zach Mulholland.
So I think that one of the issues here is that these budget shortfalls are seen as inevitable when these are a slow-moving train wreck, that if we actually were committed to raising additional resources to save and then expand homelessness services, that we could. We can find money to save these programs and then to expand them, and I'm committed to doing that. Back in 2022, I think we saw a similar issue with the city of Eugene, that we were headed towards budget shortfalls. So in 2022, I recommended the city form a revenue committee. They didn't do it at that time. The moment that I got on the budget committee, I again suggested we form a revenue committee, and that did get formed. And the city of Eugene is now talking about how we can raise new revenue for vital services like homelessness services. The county should do the same. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let's go to Grace Whitcomb.
Thank you very much again. I'm Grace Whitcomb. I'm taking the lead from you. If we're going to, and we are, we're going to have a budget shortfall. I understand it happens. First of all, again, I want to prioritize where the budget goes towards mental health, public safety, homelessness, and housing. What we should do is cut efforts to the ecosystem. Lane County, like I said, does a really great job of taking care of our ecosystem. Name one county that does better, right? So also, if we're looking at putting transportation, sorry, transient and lodging taxes towards a stadium, I think that's amiss there. So let's all put our sources towards what's right. Let's keep our people employed. Let's keep our workers engaged with, well, actually, they need living wages right now. I understand that they have not got a raise in a few years, and 2% does not count for a cost of living wage. So the money needs to be spent on our people, and I'm just going to say that. Thank you.
I think it's important, this particular budget shortfall that we're experiencing at Lane County is actually due to the running course of an infusion of federal aid that we received during the COVID-19 pandemic. The majority of the shortfall is actually because we're running out of money that was given to us over a short period of time, thanks to President Biden and the American Rescue Plan Act. What we've done in anticipation of this infusion of money running its course is pared back and increased efficiency in the services that we already do deliver, so we can continue to deliver them at a lower cost. And we are doing that based on the lessons we learned when we had greater resource with the American Rescue Plan Act money. So it's a little bit of a false, it's a cut, but it's a cut based on a one-off outlier increase in revenue that we had. That also tells me that the federal government can provide more resource for local governments to deliver vital services, and that we should be hoping for and looking for that to happen again. I will also say that what we do now is use data, evidence-based best practice, and innovation, and shoring up our workforce, because workforce retention saves the county money. And so that's how we're accommodating revenue shortfalls as best we can while continuing to deliver vital services.
Thank you all so much. I'm going to change topics here and talk about land use. Over this last term, the Board has had to make decisions about how to regulate land use around issues like erosion and floodway risk. How will you strike a balance of being safe and environmentally responsible while also meeting the county's demands for more housing and development? And let's start with Zach Mulholland.
Thank you. So I think there's a couple issues in this area where there are some critical differences between me and the person that currently sits on the Board. So the most recent issue is around building in the floodway. So every 100 years, we're expecting a massive flood in Lane County that will wash away all of the homes in the floodway. Encouraging people to build in the floodway is putting their lives and their property at risk, and we should be helping people move out of the floodway, not encouraging them to expand their housing footprint in the floodway, especially for some of our lowest-income community members. Unfortunately, my opponent has taken a lot of money, from $25,000 from gravel mine owners over the last year, $15,000 from wood products companies over the last year, and these are the companies that come to the county commission asking for permits. And I don't think that it's right, the county commissioners are taking money from some of the biggest polluters in Lane County, like Murphy Plywood, which Cleaner Air Oregon says is the most toxic facility in Lane County. I don't think it's right that he's taking money from them, and I will never take corporate money, and I will serve your interest on the Board, not corporate interest. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I'm not going to talk about my supporters at this point in time. I hope that question comes later. We'll elaborate deeply. We'll elaborate deeply on that. Regarding housing, as I mentioned earlier, we're falling 1,200 units behind per year in Lane County with organic housing, just the housing that we need to sustain the growth that's organic in Lane County. We have to have all hands on deck. We have to build front doors and multifamily housing as densely as we can in urban growth areas and as well as we can within the law outside of urban growth areas. We need to adhere to state regulations. In some cases, we do exceed state regulations. Quite often, we do, based on local conditions. It's important that we put as many houses as we possibly can so that the many people who are suffering from homelessness or inadequate housing and the kids who are graduating from school have places to live. Now, we can talk more about the floodway ordinance. We can talk more about the erosion ordinance, and I'll invite anyone to sit with me and talk, and we'll have coffee and talk very specifically about why the right ordinance was put in place. But for that, in the meantime, we have to make certain that the people living in Lane County have a place to live.
Grace Whitcomb.
Thank you for this question. This is actually the reason why I started on this journey to get on the Board. It was because friends of mine were struggling with Lane County commissioners taking away their rights to add property finally to be able to build on the floodway. They own property there. They've bought it there because why? It was cheaper. They pay more, they pay more flood insurance for it, but yes, that's why. They choose to live there. It's their chance to have real estate. And so they needed to get approval to add more house size to their real estate. Finally, it was allowed that they could increase the size of their footprint by 50%. But this is not just my friends. It's all over Lane County. And yes, we do care about where our people, but please let people make the decisions on their own land.
We have a number of different areas in Lane County with different kinds of zoning, and our housing shortage and the housing crisis is too urgent to spend a lot of time on small, one-off developments. The way to, the pathway to building the sheer volume of number of units of housing that we need is to focus in the incorporated cities and in the what I call bedroom communities, the unincorporated but named communities within Lane County. Remember, we are a county the size of the state of Connecticut. County commissioners have no authority to pass housing laws or zoning regulations within incorporated cities. So we need to do everything we can to support our smaller organized communities, like the rebuild zone upriver where the Holiday Farm Fire happened, to put in critical infrastructure like water, broadband, electricity, to support the development of denser housing, which also supports creating community. Housing needs to be multi-unit and different types of housing for different stages of life and accessible to services like schools and healthcare and grocery and transit. And so we have a very complex landscape of state and local land use laws that we have to comply with while we're also facing a critical housing shortage.
Wonderful. Thank you all. I want to ask a question that is mainly targeted at some discussion just now between Zach and Pat, but all of you are welcome to answer. This is a publicly elected position. How do you and how will you avoid conflicts of interest with those that financially support your campaign? Start with Pat.
I was hoping that question would be asked. You know, we all have contributors to our campaigns, and my contribution list is very broad. A number of my contributors are sitting in the audience right now. I am supported by unions. I'm supported by SEIU and supported by the carpenters and the Public Works Union. I'm supported by the firefighters and by Peace Officers Association. Beyond that, I'm supported by many individuals, people like Linda Hamilton sitting in the audience right here, for instance, people like Dr. John LeBeau, people like John Van Landingham, people who support me for the work that I do. If we look at one name, and this is kind of the elephant in the room, you might mention it, Ed King. I met Ed King when he was on the Board of Food for Lane County. He hired me to be the, he was on the Board that hired me to be the executive director for Lane County. Ed King and I have a very similar point of view regarding services for those suffering from poverty and homelessness. Since the day that I met him, Ed has been a contributor to first my city council campaign and beyond. I'll go much deeper into that. We all have contributors. My largest contributor and Commissioner Treeger's largest contributor is the same contributor.
Zach Mulholland.
Thank you. First and foremost, I do not take any corporate PAC money. I will never have someone coming before the Board asking us to approve permits that I will have taken money from. It won't be an issue of conflict of interest because I won't have any conflict of interest. I'm supported by numerous unions, including the Lane Community College Education Association, which is where I am currently on the Board. They're supporting me. The AFSCME Local 2831, which currently is the Lane County employees. Pat's their boss. They are supporting me. They want Pat fired because he doesn't treat them with dignity and respect, in my opinion. If you watch the Board meetings, you'll see it. You know, I think it's unfortunate that some of the folks that Pat's taking money from have interests where they're pushing massive fossil fuel export terminals, like the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas export terminal, like the carpenters was a big issue for them from their regional director. And the fact is, I'm the only candidate in this race endorsed by the League of Conservation Voters representing environmental interests because they know that I'm going to protect the environment. I'm not going to support the proposed gravel mine in Oak Ridge that is being pushed forward or was being pushed forward by Mr. King and is likely to come back, that Mr. Farr supported. If you oppose gravel mines in Oak Ridge and you want to encourage people to not build in the most dangerous places of the county, like places that are prone to wildfire risk and in the floodway, then I'm your guy. Thank you.
Thank you both. Commissioner Treeger.
Thank you. I am so proud that the vast majority of my contributors are actually constituents that live in my district. They're not entities. They're individuals. Of the entities that do support me, it's because we share values and interests, and that is different than a conflict of interest. Oregon government ethics requires that we not put ourselves in a position where we stand to gain personally, financially. That is what is called an actual conflict of interest, is if we stand to have personal financial gain from a decision that we make on the Board. Unions are not corporations. I'm very proud to be a strong labor candidate. My relationship with the labor movement is many, many years strong because of my work fighting for fair wages, worker protections, anti-wage theft laws, and the professionalization of caregiving work like childcare and healthcare professionals. I have absolutely no problem with any of the contributions that I have received, and I have actually turned down contributions from folks where I didn't think it was a good look to have someone with business before the Board writing a check to my campaign.
Grace Whitcomb.
I don't have much to say on this because my campaign is totally grassroots. It's basically my Christmas card list. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. Switching topics here, earlier this year, Lane County dealt with the devastating effects of an ice winter storm. With hindsight, how can the county respond to emergencies like this in the future? And let's start here with Commissioner Treeger.
Thank you. One of the most important lessons we learned from the ice storm was we have, this is totally nerdy, and I can't possibly answer the fully in a minute, but we have a radar gap. Basically, our predictive ability when it comes to weather fronts coming our way, we have a real blind spot in our ability to have seen this storm coming. So that is something we went right to work, once it was identified, addressing with our federal delegation to secure funding and the ability to backfill so that we can see storms like this coming. We just didn't know this was going to happen. But it did happen. storms like this coming. We just didn't know this was going to happen. But it did happen, and when it did, we went immediately to work, standing up our emergency operations center, and I personally put in a call to the governor's office, which resulted in the action of her declaring a state of emergency, which then freed up state aid and additional resource, including some of her leadership team coming down and working out of our emergency operations center to support our public utilities and address the problems, especially in the communities hardest hit like Springfield and Cottage Grove. We have a new emergency manager who's done phenomenal work, doing a series of what we call hot washes or look backs at what went well, what are the opportunities to do better, and so we will be doing better in the next event because there will be more events like this.
Wonderful. Grace Whitcomb.
I moved here in 2000, May 18th, 2000, was a really great day, from Oklahoma City, and our problem there is tornadoes. And in Oklahoma City, the power lines are all below grade. They're in the ground. And here, I'm just like always surprised at how I have to drive on Willamette Street and turn tightly into a parking lot and miss a power pole. And I wish the power poles were below grade here. And that's exactly what's caused our huge problem with the ice storm because so many power lines broke. I do want to applaud the county, the city, the utility boards that got our public works people out there, and I don't know how they did it, but they worked so hard during that ice storm when I couldn't even walk on it. So I really appreciate everybody. It's very sad, the individuals that died of asphyxiation when they tried to cook or heat themselves up with a hibachi grill, but please, if we could somehow in the future, put the power lines below grade. That would help.
Commissioner Farr, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, a number of years ago, eight years or so ago, we had Snowmageddon. You may remember that. It was an emergency that struck about half the county. The other half of the county didn't get struck. In Snowmageddon, we fielded our emergency, emergency center, and we learned new things along the way that helped us prepare for the recent ice storm. Three years ago, four years ago, excuse me, we had the Holiday Farm Fire. The Holiday Farm Fire created a different kind of emergency, very different than Snowmageddon, but very similar tactics needed to be employed with the, with the Holiday Farm Fire, and we learned from that. Some of the learning that we did helped us, helped us prepare for the ice storm. We learned from the ice storm also. What we have learned is that the men and women of our local 626, our Public Works Union, are the ones that get out on the road and get out there and help the people who are isolated and who need help. The men and women of our, of our Peace Officers Association are the ones that get out there and help evacuate, help people get home, and make sure that people aren't losing their loved ones, and especially their pets. So the people who work for Lane County, the people who, yes, in fact, I am the boss of, the people who support me in my reelection bid are the ones that really get out there during the emergency and make sure that we are prepared for the next emergency.
Thank you all so much. As a last question, oh, I'm so sorry, Zach. Go ahead. Zach Mulholland.
Thanks. So I think that as we prepare for future emergencies, there's definitely a lot that can be done, both to harden our infrastructure in terms of undergrounding electric wires, making sure that our water systems are prepared for emergencies like this, making sure that we are having fire defensible zones around homes, and also working with our emergency shelters to make sure that they're prepared for an emergency, because our homeless shelters were totally overwhelmed in the last ice storm. I think part of this is also about prevention. So that's twofold. So one is, there's a climate crisis. We have not been reducing emissions in line with what we need to. The world has not, and we are seeing the consequences of that begin to play out. So I would be a strong proponent for making Lane County a true leader on climate change and reducing our emissions, investing in EV action plans, and reducing natural gas use, in addition to helping people switch to our already clean electricity to the system. And the other piece is about, about prevention is really helping our homeowners be prepared for an emergency, making sure that they have three weeks of food available, making sure that our, again, our public services like water can actually withstand a major ice storm like this, so that they don't get shut off, and then people don't even know that they're supposed to boil their water while they don't have electricity because they don't have access to internet. Thank you.
Thank you all. For a final question, when you speak to constituents, rather, in your districts, are there other concerns that they frequently bring up that stand out to you and you want to mention here on this stage? And let's start with Commissioner Trigger.
Thank you. I spend a lot of time in the community, in the district, talking with folks, and boy, there's a, there's a lot that is on people's minds because we're a very rich and varied and diverse district. I would say the lack of, in addition to the issues that we've talked about today around our unhoused neighbors, the housing shortage, climate crisis, good-paying jobs, I hear a lot of conversation about behavioral health and addiction services, and I've been a strong advocate to increase our opportunities to serve folks in those areas. I hear a lot about how we're responding to Measure 110, both in the wake of its passage and in the wake of the reforms that the legislature recently put in place. And the other thing I hear a lot about is childcare, access to affordable, quality childcare, both from a provider perspective, where we want to professionalize that workforce and support providers in really being the small business owners that they are, while also delivering care to our most vulnerable folks in the community, which is the little ones, as well as affordability and access that childcare is available in the places and the ways and the hours and at a price point families can afford, because childcare is the work that makes all other work possible.
Perfect. Grace Whitcomb.
Yes, there are lots of things that this vocal community has voiced to me. One, which really threw me off guard, is something that was transparent, in my opinion, but the Santa PAC and EPUD have sent out letters to their customers. We, the county approved or voted for an integrated material and energy recovery facility that's going to cost $150 million. They're, chosen the land, the land has problems, and therefore, it's going to cost more. EPUD has generated electricity at Short Mountain landfill through their innovative partnership with Lane County for decades, and now with this change, it's going to take away that partnership, and the EPUD customers will be hit hard with higher bills, and that's just not good. I don't have enough time to go into it. But I think that our resources, again, should be put towards homelessness, housing, behavior health, mental health, and the lack of human resources, which is to get people trained to do better, higher-paid jobs.
Perfect. Let's go to Zach Mulholland.
Thanks. As I've been out talking to voters in the neighborhoods, I live in Bethel, been doing a lot of my door-knocking in the area, and I think community-wide, the really biggest issues are housing homelessness. People are really concerned that their kids are not going to be able to afford and to buy a home and raise a family in Eugene. This is a real issue where, you know, we have students that graduate from the University of Oregon, they just don't think that they can afford to work and live in Eugene, and I think that that's a major problem. Homelessness services, another major issue, everybody that I talk to is shocked that we would be looking at cutting services rather than expanding them at this time. In Bethel, the J.H. Baxter issue that has contaminated dozens of properties with danger, poisonous dioxin, which is a carcinogen, is a major issue for them, and they do not want additional large polluters going into their area, and I'm going to put in rules to make sure that doesn't happen. Another sort of local issue in Bethel is the development of Golden Garden Ponds Park, where I'm very committed to making sure that the natural feel of that park is protected for those community members. And the last thing I'll mention is biking and walking infrastructure, the need for sidewalks that are smooth and safe to walk on, the need for additional biking infrastructure. I was very proud to get new bike paths added to the Lane County Bicycle Master Plan, including a path from the west Eugene wetlands to Fern Ridge, as well as north around the city to the river, so that people in Bethel can access the river in Fern Ridge, and everyone can access Fern Ridge using the Fern Ridge path. Thank you.
And finally, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. You know, I've already talked about housing and homelessness, and I've already talked about some elements of public safety, so I'm going to go on to something that really is critical to a lot of people when I ask about it. People feel unsafe, particularly in our cities, but also in parks and other areas, and they feel unsafe because of the unpredictable nature of some of the people who are in our, in our cities, in our parks, people who are in crisis. People experience, folks who are on the street corner yelling and screaming, walking out into the streets, and causing what they feel to be an unsafe environment for them to take their families. Sometimes it's parks, sometimes it's Lane County parks. What we need to focus on, and what we will focus on, is mobile crisis response and the critical intersection of behavioral health and the criminal justice system, making certain that people who are suffering from behavioral health issues find treatment in one of our soon-coming crisis centers, or, and be diverted from the jail, be diverted from, from hospitals. We need more, more treatment beds, we need more treatment facilities, and that is in the future for us.
Wonderful. We are going to move on to closing statements, I believe. Let's start with Zach Mulholland.
City Club, thanks again for having me here today. It's been a pleasure to talk to you about my priorities around good jobs, affordable housing, clean air and water, and the homelessness crisis. Again, I'm the only Democrat in this race. I'm endorsed by the Democratic Party of Lane County, the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, unions, Lane Community College Education Association, APSME Local 2831, and the statewide APSME Council 75, as well as the AFL-CIO, Lane County Central Labor Chapter, and the Eugene Tenants Alliance representing renters. I'm proud that I will work for you, and I'm proud that I have not taken tens of thousands of dollars from the wood products industry and gravel mine owners, and you can know that I'm in a fight to make sure that every young person in Eugene, your kids, your friends, can afford to live and work and raise a family in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Pat Farr. I've been a servant in Lane County for many, many years. I started at Jerry's Home Improvement Center when there were 11 of us working over there back in the late 1970s. We built Jerry's as we built this community. This community evolved around the work that I have done when I was on the Eugene City Council, when I was in the state legislature, when I worked for Food for Lane County, and now as a county commissioner. I'm looking forward to the work of the future. Our work is ahead of us. We live in a dynamic world. We have to, we have to learn from the lessons from the past to inform the way we behave in the future. People with experience, people who have been there, been there and done it, people who have kids in the schools, people who really know what is happening in their community are the ones that we need to have in leadership in our, in our, in our county, in our state, and at the national level. I look forward to continuing my work as a Lane County Commissioner, and I also invite anyone in this audience, listening or in the room, sit down with me. Let's talk more in detail about some of the things, particularly about campaigns and how we run campaigns, and particularly about support from manufacturers, support from individuals, and the support, the strong support that I have from unions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Club. It's really been a pleasure to be here and learn more about City Club. I plan to come and visit you on Fridays at noon. My name again is Grace Whitcomb. I'm a housing provider. I've been teaching how to flip houses for quite a few years now, and that's why I realize this real struggle out there with people that have dilapidated homes and need them rebuilt so that other people can move in with an FHA loan, and I understand the whole dynamic with businesses. One thing I did not mention is, which was not covered, and I think it should have been, but we need to support Lane County transient and tourism tax, or lodging tax, excuse me, to go back towards bringing in more people into Eugene, keep our businesses strong, keep people coming to these, Lane County, visit the wineries, all sorts of stuff. But the reason I'm running again is because Lori Trigger has voted time and time again against more housing in Lane County. And so I know she's for it if it's in the cities, but if it's outside of the cities, then no, is always the vote. And I think that that's wrong, and that's why I'm running for Lane County. Commissioner.
Thanks again so much to City Club for hosting this event. Lori Trigger, Lane County Commissioner for District 3. We've accomplished a lot in the last four years at Lane County, but there's so much more to do, and I'm up for the challenge and energized by the possibilities. My proven record on public health, behavioral health, and public safety has earned me the endorsement of our local firefighters. My strong stance on housing is why both the Eugene Realtors and the Eugene Tenants Alliance are with me. My long and effective, dedicated history of fighting for fair wages and safe working conditions, particularly for women and people of color, is why I'm supported by hundreds of unions and trades groups members, ranging from caregivers to carpenters. The Sierra Club and the Oregon League of Conservation Voters trust me to protect their one, this one and only planet. I'm endorsed by elected leaders up and down the ballot, Senators Wyden and Merkley, Congresswoman Val Hoyle, Peter DeFazio, House Speaker Julie Fahey, numerous city councilors and school board members. You can visit laoretriger.com to learn more about me and my priorities, but most importantly, to those residents in my district, I hope I have your trust and support. I'm Lori Trigger, and I would be honored to once again earn your vote and continue serving as your Lane County Commissioner. Thank you.
Please join me in thanking our candidates and our moderator. This has been the City Club of Eugene's May 3, 2024 program. May is Bike Month, so there's lots of opportunities to get out there in the community and take free rides on Peace Health bikes and all the rest, so check it out in a community near you. Next week, we will be back, this time at Headquarters Wine Bar, for a discussion about the wine industry of Eugene and Lane County. So it should be a good one. I can't say what beverages will be on hand, but I can assure you they will be plentiful. Lastly, and most importantly, next Sunday's Mother's Day, give your mom a call. She's waiting for it, and I, that's all the time we have for today. So see you next week. Thanks.